We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no one wishing to address the board, so we will go on. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 2nd meeting, please?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Approval of the agenda, please.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No conflicts of interest. And before we move on, Board Member Parker is out of state on business, so she will not be joining us this afternoon, and we'll carry on and do our best in her absence. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And we are on to the reports of the President.
Good afternoon, President Alberti, members of the Board. My name is Benjamin Valdez, I'm the Vice President of Academic Affairs for Southeast Tech. Wanted to provide an update on the medical assisting and dental assisting prospectuses, which were brought before you for approval at the last board meeting. We had a special meeting in the State Board of Technical Education this past Monday, and both of them were approved with their final approval at the state level. Everything is now being forwarded to the Higher Learning Commission for review. We are hoping that the Higher Learning Commission will accept them and not require it to have a visitor and additional information, since we have ongoing and running programs within the health industry. So, then if, once we get approval from them, we'll be able to move forward with actually starting to enroll students and applying for financial aid, approval from the U.S. Department of Education. The other program that we're looking to now have you as the Board of Education approve is an Associate of Applied Science and Technical Studies. This was a educational program that was approved by the South Dakota State Board of Education back in November of 2016, before the formation of the Board of Technical Education. This AAS has a history that, or the rationale behind it was to provide students who had graduated with either a certificate or a diploma to come back and earn an associate's degree and have more and further education. An example would be a student who graduated with a diploma in plumbing or a diploma in welding, and they wanted to further their education and become a business owner. They could come back, complete the general education requirements, and take additional courses through our business department and earn an Associate of Applied Science degree. This program, for whatever reason, was never brought forth here at Southeast Tech, and we want to go ahead and move forward with offering this, and then reaching out to former alum of Southeast Tech and providing this option to come back, further education, provide them with further education, and giving them an opportunity to even grow further within their careers. So we are asking for the Board of Education here to go ahead and approve us to offer the Associate of Applied Science and Technical Studies. Questions?
Yes, are these classes probably ones we already are teaching that just will be a matter of making sure the curriculum lines up within the...
Correct.
Yeah.
They are all going to be based upon courses that are already in existence, that there's nothing new being added in terms of coursework. It's a completion degree to earn an associate's degree at this point.
Any other questions? All right. First, let's take from the update on the medical assistance and dental assistance proposals. If we could have Bill to acknowledge that report.
I move to acknowledge your report on the medical and dental assistance program.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? We don't need to approve that, we're just acknowledging your report on that, right, Benjamin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Exciting. Definitely a need in Sioux Falls for both of those roles, so it's good to have that opportunity for students to study while they're here.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Motion is second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And then if I can have a motion to approve the technical studies program.
Second.
Discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Twenty nineteen legislative update. President Griggs.
Good afternoon, President Alberti. I'd like to welcome to our meeting this afternoon Nick Wendell, who's the Executive Director of the State Board of Technical Education. And Nick and I are fresh from PIER and testifying in front of the Joint Committee on Appropriations. So we're fortunate to have Nick be here and share with you a little bit of what's going on in PIER as well. Thank you. Nick?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to provide you some legislative updates, and also just some general updates on the South Dakota Board of Technical Education. As President Griggs said, my name is Nick Wendell, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Board. And I've not had an opportunity yet to give you kind of an overview of the Board's activity in our first year and a half, so I wanted to spend some time doing that and giving you kind of a high-level snapshot of what's happening across the system, across all four institutions, and spend some time highlighting a couple of key programs at Southeast Tech as well, that the Board's really pleased with right now. And certainly, if there is a point in the presentation where you have questions, feel free to let me know, or I can take questions after, whatever you're comfortable with. Certainly, I want to take a moment to commend Southeast Tech on the program proposals that they developed for the medical assisting and dental assisting programs. They certainly responded to industry and community needs. They worked closely with our team at the Board to determine a way that we could ensure that those were approved, and I know partnered with you all to move through the approval process. And we appreciate that, because I think one of the hallmarks of the technical institute system in South Dakota is that they are nimble and responsive to industry needs, and delaying that approval process would have meant that there were young people who could be enrolled in those programs, that we need to be workers in our communities and across our state. And so we did a special call-in meeting this week to ensure that we could handle that approval process. After hearing from some industry leaders at our December meeting, we knew that our next meeting in March was too long to wait. So I think it's an example of how we can be responsive and partner together with institutions and communities across the state. Well, I wanted to just touch on kind of the mission and the intent behind the Board of Technical Education. Of course, one of our primary objectives is to advance the mission and the identity of technical education across the state. And I think one of the other key objectives we have is to continue to shift the public perception around the value of technical education. We think there's tremendous value at each of our institutions, and individuals that graduate with credentials from one of our programs certainly have tremendous career opportunities, and their starting salaries are strong, and there are tremendous workforce needs in every community across the state of South Dakota. And if we can continue to have those types of conversations in cities large and small, we can continue to, I think, shift the existing perception around technical education, and more of our young people and non-traditional learners will pursue degrees. One of the things our Board has done in the last year has come together around strategic planning and really clearly articulating our vision, and that's the mission you see before you, a real focus on high-quality programs that meet the needs of industry, develop workforce, and promote student success. So enroll students that'll be a good fit in our programs, help them to be retained beyond the first year, to persist to graduation, and ultimately to be placed in meaningful careers. I wanted to provide you a list of our Board members as well. When the Board originated in July of 2017, then-Governor Dugard appointed nine members to the Board of Technical Education. There was a real intent to ensure that that membership represented different industries across the state and different regions across the state of South Dakota. So we've got nine folks who truly are invested in industries that are directly impacted by the work at our technical institutes. And some of them have been closely connected to our institutions, and others are, were more closely connected to their industry and have learned a whole lot about our institutions. But those are the nine folks. We're chaired by Dana Dykhouse here locally, and Diana Vanderwoody from Sanford Health here in Sioux Falls also serves on our Board, so there's good Sioux Falls representation on the Board as well. Those folks' terms were staggered out, of course, so that they wouldn't all exit the Board after their first three and six years of service. So three of those Board members were just reappointed to their second terms on the Board. I think you all are certainly familiar with our technical institutes, but for our viewers listening at home, I will just touch on the four institutions. Lake Area Technical Institute in Watertown, Southeast Technical Institute here in Sioux Falls, Mitchell Technical Institute in Mitchell, and Western Dakota Technical Institute in Rapid City make up the four institutions in our technical institute system. I did want to take a minute to just brag about our institutions. We've received some really phenomenal recognition recently from some national organizations that measure two-year public institutions. Our state happens to have a technical institute system, and refer to them as technical institutions, but when we look at national benchmarks, often we're compared with other two-year public institutions or public colleges, and some states refer to it as community colleges. The vernacular means some different things in different areas, but when you compare us to other public two-year institutions and systems across the country, our institutions compare really favorably. Often, the criteria that those organizations are using involve affordability, return on investment, student outcomes related to retention and graduation, and then ultimately placement. So I wanted to share some of that detail, because it really is a feather in the cap of each of our institutions. The next slide is kind of the 10,000-foot view of the system. Over 6,800 individuals educated in the technical institute system each year, so that's full-time, part-time, and dual-credit students. Approximately 2,300 individuals infused into our workforce each year. So those are folks that are graduating with credentials from one of our programs and entering the workforce. This next number is a key one, the 1,200 or more industry experts that are helping to guide curriculum and build programs at one of our institutions. Those are folks that are serving on advisory councils, that really do help to define the quality of those programs, and looking into the future of their own industries, and providing feedback for our faculty. But also those that are engaged in alumni associations or foundation work. Those partnerships have been really impactful at our institutions. I'll talk in a moment about the capital campaign that Southeast Tech has launched in the last year, and that type of activity is really driving the future of our technical institutes, because there is a lot of interest among our industry partners in partnering in real meaningful ways, and private partnerships that can bring some dollars into the system that can allow us to do, I think, some real impactful work together. I'll spend some time in a moment talking about some of our placement and graduate information as well, which is noted on that slide. The next slide really focuses on enrollment, and this is unduplicated enrollment. In our system, we count full-time, part-time, and dual-credit enrolled students. So this really is a head count of every unique individual in the system that's engaged in education at one of our institutions. That's the green line, which in current academic year, the projection is 6,825 individuals. The red line also on this chart is our unduplicated enrollment without dual credit. You'll see on the next page the real expansion of the dual-credit program over the last five years, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the dual-credit program and how it has expanded in our state since 2014, 15. And we've certainly seen a real expansion in participation in the last couple of years. And so we try to break that number out now, so folks can get a look at who those full- and part-time students are at our institutions, and also those that are participating in dual credit. And we're a big believer in the value of the dual-credit program. We think the single best way that a young person can determine whether or not they'd be good at college is to try it, and dual credit gives them a chance to. So we really are champions of that program. Another number that's valuable, I think, from a kind of a funding perspective, and takes a snapshot of participation on our campus, is the full-time equivalent number. In our system, we consider full-time 30 credit hours in an academic year. So we take all the credits earned across the system in an academic year and divide it by 30 to come up with what we call a full-time equivalent, or an FTE number. That's really the number we use for funding, so if you hear someone reference the, in our system, the per-student allocation, it's the same in the K-12 system. That FTE number is what we're using as the multiplier there, and the projection in 1819 is 5,891, a slight uptick over the previous academic year in FTE numbers. That next slide just breaks it down by institution, so you can see the big number, but then also see how that breaks out across our four institutions. I should note on that chart, and on a couple of our charts, we've also included some goals. So those are shaded in blue on the far-right-hand column, some of our goals for growth across the system. The next slide just looks at retention across the system, and we have seen retention growth. I will tell you that this is a number we're proud of in our system. Retaining students in a two-year public environment is challenging, and so when we compare ourselves to some other national benchmarks, we perform really well in retention. And the next slide actually breaks down across the system where those retention numbers are. You can see all four institutions on that graph and how they compare. One thing that I've noted throughout this year, we're truly proud of the retention rate at each of our institutions. All four of our institutions are above the national average. But I do like to note that at Southeast Tech and Western Dakota Tech, you see a slightly smaller rate of retention. And part of that is the audience that they serve. At Mitchell Technical Institute and Lake Area Technical Institute, they're doing phenomenal work in the area of retention, but they have a primary student population of traditionally-aged students. Those students that come directly from high school, enter an academic program typically as full-time students. All students have retention risks, but a traditionally-aged student coming directly from high school and becoming a full-time, first-time student, they have far fewer retention risks than those non-traditional students that have lots of other factors. We see a much larger percentage of non-traditional students at Southeast Tech and at Western Dakota Tech, and that's going to impact their retention rates. And I try to note that, because I do think there's some real distinctions among the student populations across our system, and it's important to kind of recognize that as we're comparing things like their retention rates. Graduate outcomes are crucial in our system, of course, and so I wanted to report for you all some information from our graduate outcomes report. I should note that we collect graduate data between six and eight months post-graduation, so we're just finalizing that data collection for the spring of 2018 class, and we'll be releasing our graduate outcomes report this spring to the Board and sharing it publicly. These numbers actually look at the 2017 report. One thing that I want to note is that this is a survey that we really believe in the results of, because it has such a phenomenal response rate, almost 91%. And if you work in the world of surveying, you know that can be a pretty formidable task to get that higher response rate. That's a great credit to the folks on the ground at our institutions that are working very closely to track where those graduates are headed post-graduation, and ultimately where they land, and have good industry relationships, so they know which among their graduates have moved into positions. 97.2% of our graduates in the spring of 2017 were considered placed, and those are folks who are employed, continuing their education, or entering the military. Then the next slide breaks that down a bit more. A number that we have particular interest in are those folks who are employed in South Dakota and employed in their field in the state of South Dakota. The mission of our technical institutes truly are to prepare skilled professionals that can be infused into our workforce. So we have particular interest in knowing the number of our students who are coming out of the institutions and finding employment opportunities in their field in South Dakota. The next slides focus on a couple of our primary funding goals for this legislative session. As President Griggs noted, we were with the Joint Committee on Appropriations this morning and made a quick trip back from PIER so that we could be with you all, but it gave us an opportunity to highlight some of our budget priorities, which really was our priority coming into this legislative session. One of the areas that we had made a request for FY20 was in the area of instructor salary support. Over the last three years, the technical institute system has received revenue, sales tax revenue, to support enhancing our instructor salaries, much like the K-12 system has benefited from some additional sales tax revenue to support teacher salaries. We received in fiscal year '17 and '18 $3 million to support enhanced instructor salaries, and in the current fiscal year, we got a 1% increase, so our current allocation is $3,030,000. In the world of technical education, we typically don't lose instructors to other institutions. It's not that they're going to provide instruction at another institution. Often, we're losing our highest-quality instructors back to the private sector. If they're in a high-demand field, if they're the type of folks that we want at the front of our classrooms and building our curriculum, they're also in high demand out in the community and the private sector. So that's the types of salaries we're competing with to recruit and retain top-quality faculty. The instructor salary support dollars have allowed us to consider the gap between our instructor salaries and what they would command in the private sector, with a couple of other factors considered as well to decide how we would apply these dollars to every position, instructor position across the system was evaluated over the last three years. You'll notice on the chart that we provided that Southeast Technical Institute receives a small, much smaller slice of that pie than the other three institutions. When the dollars initially came to the system, the four institution presidents had to come together and determine a distribution rubric that was palatable for all four and find some consensus. The dollars weren't going to just be cut four ways and distributed, they really needed to be attached to specific positions that had need across the system. In this particular scenario, unfortunately for Southeast Technical Institute, I think in part because of their location in the largest metropolitan market in the state, they had started to address their instructor salary needs years before the state dollars became available. So when the decision was made to attach these instructor salary support dollars to the gap that they had to close, Southeast Tech had a smaller gap to close to get to that median salary range in South Dakota in some of those fields. So they received fewer dollars every year, because they were already using more local fees to cover those instructor salaries and received fewer state dollars. The original allocation came with an understanding that the system would receive these for three fiscal years, and then we would reevaluate our distribution rubric. And we're at the end of that third fiscal year now, and are in the midst of reevaluating what that new rubric needs to look like. And in order to distribute fairly across the system, make up the inequity for Southeast Tech, but ensure that the other three institutions didn't have to pull back, we need additional dollars appropriated. And so that was one of our primary budget requests this year. We requested, I think, $1.5 million in additional instructor salary support dollars. $900,000 would help us make up that equity issue at Southeast Tech, and the additional dollars would be used for what we know will be increases in those fair-market ranges three years later across the system. So, you know, we don't have a sense of where that's going to go, but that was what our request reflected.
Just, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
On that. So, since we had already been paying our instructors more market-rate salaries, were to do that, we've had tuition increases and fee increases for our students. As part of that rubric, when they look at percentage of dollars that it takes to meet the salary guidelines, and how much of that goes to fees and tuition, is there going to be some effort to equalize that among all four, to bring us up to where everyone is, to help our students not have to pay as much in tuition and fees?
Right. Well, we're having lots of conversations about what a new appropriation and a new distribution rubric could do. One of them is kind of breaking the rubric all the way down and considering what factors we plug in to determine who gets what dollars. The biggest challenge in that is, if we got, let's say we get level-funded, and we get $3,030,000 in this next fiscal year, in order to bring more dollars to Southeast Tech, we'd have to pull dollars back from the other three institutions, which are directly tied to salaries of their instructors. So I'd say we've got some really lively conversations ahead of us in the next couple of weeks, because that decision's got to be made soon.
Then President Griggs would just have to go explain to them how they increase tuition and fees to meet those salary guidelines for their instructors, since we're experienced at that.
That would be one option.
Okay.
I do appreciate the question, though, because it speaks to the nuances, and there's lots of moving parts. If we solve one issue, we create some others. And so we have tried to spend as much time as possible just making, A, the legislators understand that the instructor salary support dollars have had a tremendous positive impact on the system. They really have been impactful, and we are appreciative of that. But in the second phase now, this, now we'll be approaching the fourth fiscal year, some additional dollars would be required to truly create equity across the system.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the question. One of our other priorities, which was built into the FY20 recommended budget, both from Governor Dugard and now Governor Noem, was continuation of our maintenance and repair funding. So the expectation in the state is that we maintain 2% of our overall replacement costs for state-owned facilities. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. We had worked with the Bureau of Finance and Management and the Office of the Governor to develop a multi-year plan to grow an M&amp;R fund together. So over time, over six years, the state would contribute 1%, and our institutions would contribute 1%, so that eventually, over six years, we'd get to that 2% balance. And so last year, we received an appropriation, our current fiscal year, of $223,675, as you see on the chart, and that's how it was distributed among the four. Our request in FY20 was to continue that in year two, which would bring our total M&amp;R appropriation to just over $505,000, which is, again, a really great partnership between the state and our institutions. The state contributing M&amp;R dollars to the ongoing maintenance of our facilities is a really great step forward, and will be a gift over time, so that we're not relying so heavily on local fees to manage what traditionally really has been a burden locally to maintain those facilities. And so we were happy to see year two funded. It's hard to live out a six-year plan with a legislative body, as you can all imagine. So the fact that we're at year two, we feel like is a good milestone, and I think just reaffirms their commitment to continue growing that M&amp;R fund over time. I won't take a tremendous amount more of your time, but I did want to just take a few moments while I was with you to highlight a couple of programs at Southeast Technical Institute. One of them is the Licensed Practical Nursing Program, and you can see some of those statistics. But one of the things that I think is another indicator of success at this program is the way the institution has approached creative enrollment management. There's tremendous demand in some of these healthcare programs across the state and at STI. They've really had to think about how they create more student access by looking at different dayparts to provide courses and extend those programs, and that access piece in particular for non-traditional learners is really important. So I appreciate the work that STI and our other institutions are engaged in this as well, really thinking creatively about how, you know, we create opportunities at different dayparts for students to participate in our programs. And I do think it's paying off. They've seen a 23% increase in enrollment since 2013 in that program. And as you can see, the outcomes for those who complete the program, 86 out of 86 of them passing the certification, and 98% of them being placed indicates that completion of the program leads to career outcomes. I also wanted to note the Registered Nursing Program, because I think it represents another great, another great partnership that leads to access, sometimes of a different nature. This is a partnership with Huron Regional Medical Center. 23 students accepted in each cohort, which might seem like a relatively small amount, but that can be a tremendous infusion into the rural workforce, which have tremendous healthcare needs. This is a different kind of access, but it certainly provides access to a program in communities and in a part of the state that's kind of a post-secondary desert. So that partnership between STI and HRMC, I think, is going to be real positive for that part of the state. Just have a couple more highlights. One of them is the Electrician Program. I think it really demonstrates the value of industry partnerships and the dividends that those can pay, and they've seen just a tremendous increase in enrollment since the program launched in 2015, and also tremendous partnerships with industry leaders that have strengthened over time in meeting some of those industry needs. And also increased interest in that computer programming program, which has enrollment, which has continued to increase since its launch in 2013 in a field that we know is emerging, an important one for technical education to prepare young workers in. One other highlight I wanted to note while I was with you about Southeast Tech, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, is their capital campaign. And I will tell you, from a State Board perspective, we're excited about our institutions not only just building those really positive relationships, but I think framing them in such a capital campaign that clearly declares some of the initiatives and the goals tied to their work and fundraising and development work. And, you know, that's somewhat new territory for... And, you know, that's somewhat new territory for a two-year environment. I think we traditionally think of our university counterparts as doing comprehensive capital campaigns and foundation work. But there are tremendous opportunities with industry partners and alumni and private supporters of our two-year institutions. And we talk a lot about state support and increasing tuition and fees and finding private opportunities to bring dollars in the system to do some cool things in facility and program development is crucial. And so I want to applaud Southeast Tech and other institutions in our system that I think are doing even more meaningful campaign and development work. And the capital campaign in the Southeast Tech Now campaign is a great example of that. The last thing I wanted to note was the Build Dakota Scholarship Program. We're in year four of that program. It was a program that was launched in the fall of 2015 with a $25 million gift from T. Denny Sanford, which was matched by then-Governor Dugard with a $25 million contribution of future funds. The idea was that we would provide full ride scholarships to students that were willing to attend one of our four technical institutes in one of nine high-need academic fields and then agree to work in the state of South Dakota three years after graduation. You can see some of the growth the program has seen, and in particular, the area that we're most excited about is that industry partner number. You can see in that first year, we had 23 industry partners and we're in the midst of cohort four now and have 216 industry partners. Those are industry folks who have stepped forward and said, "I support these Build Dakota Scholars in such a way that I'll pay 50% of the cost of their scholarship if they'll come work for me three years after graduation." So I think it shows tremendous commitment from those industry leaders. I think it also shows tremendous faith in the programs and the quality of the graduates that they'll receive from those programs. And I think it, over time, will allow us to stretch those scholarship dollars even more. The initial agreement with Mr. Sanford was five years, and so we're moving toward that fifth year. I'll tell you that the $25 million in future funds that were committed are still in an endowment in the South Dakota Community Foundation and have actually grown over the last couple of years. So the Build Dakota Scholarship Program's not going away, but as we approach the end of that first phase, we have to reevaluate what those scholarships will look like and whether or not there'll be a continued commitment of private dollars or if we'll have to rely on the endowment to move forward. But the Build Dakota Scholarship Program will continue. We just have to spend the next year determining what exactly it will look like.
Any of those scholarship funds ever gone? Like, we've had not enough students to actually meet those qualifications and the funding we had for those?
Actually, you know, the numbers that you see in each cohort represent between 25 and 30% of the number of applicants that we receive each year, so there's tremendous interest. One of the challenges is they have to apply, they have to meet qualifications and they have to apply in one of nine high-need areas and they have to be willing to attend an institution that has capacity in that program for them. So it is hard to match them all perfectly. I'm certain that in each year, there were applicants that really wanted to attend Lake Area Tech, but there wasn't capacity in that program. And if they had been willing to attend Mitchell Tech instead, there would have been a Build Dakota Scholarship available for them. But, you know, those are the types of decisions that our young people are grappling with when they consider scholarship offers. And so I'm certain that there were some students that might have had interest and didn't receive a Build Dakota Scholarship. It was more because they didn't align with the program or the institution where the opportunity was there. But we've been able to, I think, stretch the dollars to those that had need and met kind of all the expectations.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just looking at this side of the retention rates too, and that's a huge improvement over just the last couple of years. You know, I think that students who maybe don't have to work full-time are able to dedicate their time and energy and effort into doing well in their classes. Therefore, they do better and they stay longer and they complete their education, whereas the ones who maybe don't have a scholarship or have less of a scholarship do feel compelled and have a necessity to work. And so then that kind of pulls them in other directions and probably impacts that retention rate as well. So I think it's a positive impact and obviously the more people we can get to start and complete their education and then get them out into the workforce, working, the better off our community as a whole, so.
You're exactly right. Financial concerns is one of the leading risk factors for a student to be retained. So if we can eliminate that through the Build Dakota Scholarship, we can answer a lot of a person's questions.
Thank you for coming today.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Vice President Klune. Second Quarter Financial Report.
Well, I have to start off by saying I heard from my in stereo over there, "Well, you won't have much time. That's a good thing." So I don't know if I should be offended by that or you should be grateful for that. Either way, Rich Klune, Vice President of Finance and Operations, and we'll just run through the second quarter financial report as it relates to our operations from July through December. Just kind of hit some of the high points for you all, kind of a little bit of comparison of what we're seeing different from this year to last year. So as we go through this, you look at the financial report, first page is always what are our cash balances as we look across the year. So when you look at our various funds, you see in the post-secondary fund, $4.1 million. This time last year, we were a little bit higher. We were at 5.3. Some of that's just some timing differences of when our revenue comes in, when we actually receive the dollars. So there's a couple of things related. On the revenue side, tuition buy-down funds for the fall actually going to show up in There's also the Board of Regents Gen Ed Transfer Agreement. That revenue actually didn't come in until January. So that's one of those timing differences that happen year to year when we start laying the two sides together. The other part of it too, as you look down, you can see in the other funds, when you look at the mainly the post-secondary Food Service Fund and the Child Care Fund, more so in the post-secondary fund, there was a, yeah, the year we made a big transfer last year, pulled roughly about a half a million dollars out of a couple of different funds and propped up that Food Service Fund. So some of that came out of that cash, came out of the post-secondary fund that was an approved transfer. So in aggregate, when you look at the total at the bottom of the page of 4.5 million, last year we were sitting at 5.2. Talk about that half million I just spoke of related to the Board of Regents and the tuition buy-down, we're fairly close, you know, we're about $300,000 differential in terms of our cash position this year as compared to where we were last time, or last year, excuse me. Next page on the report is the Post-Secondary Vocational Fund. That's our main operating fund for the school. As we look across at the revenue categories, I tend to look at the percentages. So when you look at the December 18% and compare that to the December 17%, you'll notice a few differences in there. As we look at our tuition and fees, comparing to last year, we were ahead in relation to the budget. So you have to remember, in FY '18, we were outpacing what our budget was initially established at. This year in '19, we're a little bit behind our budget. And I think we've talked about some of the enrollment numbers in the past and what we're seeing. So that accounts for that differential because, again, we're comparing where we're at year to date to budget. When you look at the raw dollars, clearly we're a little bit ahead. Some of that has to do with the rates in which we charge. Across the board, there was $2 tuition increase, $3 in the local fee increase, so that picks up some of them. But as we spoke, our credit numbers are down just a bit from where we were this time last year. When we look in the other revenue or other local revenue category, one thing I wanted to point out, quite a bit of difference there in the percentage year-to-date. Remember that the local revenue includes a $500,000 line item for donations related to the Vet Tech infrastructure improvement that we're going to do out on campus. Those funds have been pledged, so that commitment has at least been met in terms of pledged dollars, but we haven't actually had the revenue come into the post-secondary fund yet. So there's bound to be that differential just because of that budget in '19 being so much higher than where we were established in FY '18. Kind of the same thing applies when you look at the state categories as well. Part of that, again, goes back to that Board of Regents that I already talked about. That would be recognized as state revenue that hasn't come in yet. Another piece of it related to the Vet Tech was a $500,000 grant from Governor's Office of Economic Development. That's viewed as state revenue too that hasn't come in. So that's why you're seeing that percentage drop a little bit below year-to-date of being 40% where last year we were right at 50%, which is kind of where you would expect to be. But it's because there's those lump sums sitting out there that haven't come in yet. Federal, we're tracking the same way. That's all reimbursable for the most part. It's either through the Adult Basic Education Program or through Perkins. So those expenditures are ongoing and it's just the timing of the reimbursement coming in. Other revenue, when we talk about such a small amount, that's just sale of surplus items. So we don't budget for that. We never know what they're going to be or what those proceeds are going to be. So that's a differential between the two auctions year to year. As we kind of look at the expenditure side of things, that's tracking more in line with where you would expect to be halfway through the year. Couple of things to note in there. Hourly pay, we're tracking a little bit, but it's a small line item in our overall budget. Scroll down here so everybody can see. So as I stated, hourly pay, it's a relatively small line item, but we are tracking a little bit ahead of where we were in prior years. As we go in and look at some of the retirement benefits, I think I've spoken to this before, our calculation is different in FY '19 as we built that budget. Always used to use 7.65 as the Social Security. We adjusted it this year to 7.15, more reflective of what we were actually seeing. So we'll be closer as a percentage of our year-to-date budget compared to where we were last year. When you look at professional services, we're running a little bit ahead on there and that's really that capital campaign. There was some carryover, was supplemented in FY '18, but the activities weren't conducted. Some of that spilled into FY '19. I typically don't do a rollover and a carryover in budget. If we've got enough room in appropriation throughout the year, we won't make that adjustment, but we'll look at that as we get closer to year end and if we have to do it. Actually appropriated all the money last year. We just didn't expend it all last year. So we may look to roll something over if need be. Advertising, we're a little bit ahead of schedule and I think that just has to do more with ads that are out there and the marketing campaigns that are ongoing. That's flowing from some of the recommendations from Staymates and some of the different activities that are being undertaken. So we're spending more of that money upfront, which should have a payoff on the back end when we get into next fall. The remainder of the categories in the operating area are tracking, similar to where we were at last year, similar with what we would expect to see year-to-date through the budget. So when you look at the overall total, you would expect to be right at 50%. That's about where we're at, 49.14. So we should pick up a little bit and there's always a natural efficiency to be gained throughout the year. Staff turnovers, people leave, they don't get filled right away. We tend to be conservative in our budget estimates and maybe estimate a little bit high and realize some gains in there. Up until the last couple of weeks, I was, I would have said we were going to have a favorable utility experience this year, but I'm not so sure anymore. So we'll just have to wait and see how the rest of the year shakes out for that. On the capital side, you'll probably see quite a bit of variance there as we look at our building improvements. And again, that goes back to that same thing related to the Vet Tech program. We've put the appropriation and the expenditure in there for the construction of that facility, but the fundraising, you never know quite when everything's going to line up. So it's taken a little bit longer than what we initially had anticipated. So the appropriation was there, but we probably won't start anything other than some preliminary engineering stuff this year. So clearly, we're not going to spend 1.5 million. That'd be another one of those items that I'll probably just reprogram it in the FY ' '20 budget, so you'll see it come forward again. But we will have quite a bit of variance as we talk about third quarter and fourth quarter in that specific category. Really having fun with this now. Think you wanted that. Sorry about that.
When the screen went blank, you were done. I guess not.
Not quite, sorry. Sorry. The other funds, as we scroll through them, or any questions on the post-secondary fund? Sorry. Any questions?
Technology was double.
What, some, a couple of things going on there. Lot of it has to do with where the budget for those items is contained and where it actually gets expended. Couple of years ago, we started to rethink our approach to our capital improvements plan, do our capital equipment plan. We do a five-year outlook and we used to include everything that was $1,000 or more on that program. And it got pretty expansive and pretty detailed. So we changed that. We shrunk it up to just look at items that are $5,000 and more when we do that. So that's for that capital equipment campaign. What I would like to do and what we don't necessarily do from an accounting standpoint is we have that equipment that falls in that $1,000 to $5,000 range that is still being recorded as capital equipment. So the actual line item that we were placing the budget in for those items is actually in a supplies item. So the budget is up in the supplies line, but the expenditure, because of the accounting structure of it and the way the comptroller likes us to carry that through to the general ledger, is in the capital expenditure side. So I know there was a large purchase in some of our networking programs in some of those areas. I also know that I left Eric a little short and he didn't listen to me when I said he can't have it. He bought it anyway. But that was planned, so we, yeah. But he didn't listen. So even if he asked nice, but that was an oversight when we adopted the '19 budget. I carved something out of there that was apparently more important to him than I thought it was. And so we had to make that. That was a necessary piece. So that's part of it. Part of it's the accounting piece of it as well. Bookstore, I'm not even going to say too much on that. That is tracking exactly as we would expect to see it. Really no surprises as it's related to the bookstore fund. Food Service Fund, which is, both these next two funds, Food Service and Child Care Fund, are both requiring some subsidies from the post-secondary fund to operate. So as you look at the, as you look at the Food Service Fund, the good news of it is, is when you look at year-to-date revenue last year versus year-to-date revenue this year, we're performing better in terms of that revenue. Not a huge difference, but performing better. On the expenditure side, expenditures are a little bit less year-to-date than where we were last year. The other thing to remember, and I always point this out and it's more prevalent in these enterprise funds, there's always a month of delay on the revenue side of it. The expenditures are tracking right on, so this is reflected through December. Revenue is only really showing through November and that just has to do with the way we transfer money into the general ledger. But if you throw in our December revenue, so you're looking at six months of revenue versus six months of expenditures, that deficit of $50,000 declines to about $33,000. So halfway through the year, the planned subsidy, when you go back up and look at the revenue line item, was planned for $85,000. Right now, we're currently sitting at a deficit of 33. We're on track. We're only at 40% of that entire subsidy amount and I would say we've already experienced the worst half of the year in terms of there really aren't, there's no students the majority of August, not a lot of students in December as well. Obviously, we'll have a falloff in May and June for the summer term, but at least there's presence in students there. So I think we've weathered the worst in terms of our sales in the next half. Should mean that we'll stay on track and hopefully not be able to need all that subsidy. I'll only transfer the amount of money that we actually need to balance the fund, not going to transfer the whole 85. going to transfer the whole 85 if we don't need it. Same thing is happening in the Child Care Fund. As we look at that, that included subsidy two of $39,000 from the post-secondary fund. Revenue's down a little bit from where it was this time last year. Expenses are about right on track. When you, same type of thing, you look year-to-date, revenue is under expenses by about $30,000, but if you throw in the December revenue, which was right at $18,000, the deficit drops down to $11,000 year-to-date. The subsidy, again, were a percentage, a third of what the entire subsidy amount is. Now their revenue will drop drastically in May and June, but also some of their labor expenses should decline as well. So I think we're on track with those estimated subsidy amounts. And again, like the Food Service Fund, won't move any more than what's actually needed to kind of balance the fund at the end of the day. Questions on the enterprise funds? Let's see, I have one minute left. If I don't mess up the machine, I'll have my time. Last page is just a cash flow statement. Won't talk too much detail about that, but it's just showing as we progress through the year and the month, whether we're generating cash, this reflects changes in payables, changes in receivables. You know, not to be surprised on the post-secondary fund to be consuming cash at this point of the year. Next month, it's going to flip around because you'll see the January tuition come in and those payments for it. So we should be, have a net positive cash flow situation on that particular fund. So very high level of where we stand, but wanted to at least update you on where we are at through the first half of the year.
Questions for Rich on the report? Very good. Thank you. Could I get a motion to acknowledge the second quarter financial report, please?
Agreed.
Second?
Discussion? During none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Anything else to come before the board? If not, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.